You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cochran, here. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammack?
Here.
Councilmember Haques?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Smith, absent. Mayor Troutman.
Here. Okay, would you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, if you would like to address council, we have a sheet of paper back there that we'd ask you to fill out and bring to our city clerk. And now, if it's something that is on the agenda, we'd wait till that agenda ida comes up, and if not, just want to talk to city council about something, please fill one of those out and bring it up, and we'll give you the opportunity to talk with us. Well, that was really popular, wasn't it? Okay, any council members like to make a comment at this time before we get rolling? No? That was really popular. It's government. Okay, we have Wednesday morning at 8:30, we have KLN. I will be there. Would someone else like to join me there?
Can't.
Well, that was really popular. We're not doing very well.
We're striking out, buddy.
I am striking.
I'm the only other one without a job, so, yeah.
That's not... Okay, well, alright.
Sorry, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that.
Well, you're retired, right?
Retired.
Okay.
You've had your jobs.
Yeah. Also, on the Wednesday at 2 o'clock, the county mayors meet, there are six of us, which you may or may not know, and we meet today, this Wednesday, we'll be meeting in Florence. And we've recently had mayors from Custer County come over and talk with us, from Silvercliff and from West Cliff. It's very interesting of the different problems and positive things that are going on in their area. So if you'd like to attend a mayor's meeting, come on down. It'll be in Florence, 2 o'clock, and it's a good group of people, so... The other thing, we have a general government meeting at 6 o'clock Wednesday, and we will be talking about...
We will be talking about the riverfront zoning language.
Okay. Should be an interesting discussion, and we'd invite you to come out and see what you have, see what you're gonna hear and talk with us about it.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would like to point out that Tuesday is the rec center meeting.
Oh.
Which I think is a pretty important topic for our citizens to know about, and that's going to be at the CCHS high school auditorium.
Okay. And we're going to do...
What time? 6:00.
6:00.
And don't forget, we have the Night Out at Macon Plaza, correct? Macon Plaza? And that will start at 5 o'clock, 5 to 7. I'm gonna have a proclamation here shortly on that, and we have some participants in the audience that are gonna come up here and get us all excited about it. Okay. Mr. Haques?
Yeah, Mayor, Members of Council, what I'd like to do is request a moment of silence for the tragic deaths that we've had in California, Texas, and Ohio. You know, you just stop and wonder, when will it stop? Unfortunately, things like this do happen, but there was a lot of uncalled-for deaths all the way from young to the elderly. So, request a moment of silence for all those people that lost loved ones, friends, and family members. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. That's very thoughtful. Appreciate that. Alright. Then I have a proclamation for National Night Out. I'd like to invite the police department. We have with us BJ Serna and Tammy Wagner to come on up, and...
Kelly Duncan.
Kelly Duncan. I knew that, Kelly. I'm so sorry. I didn't have my glasses on, so... I am going to read a proclamation, then we would ask you to have any comments that you would have, okay? So, this is National Night Out 2019. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 6th, 2019, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 36th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Canyon City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in performing cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas Canyon City Police Department plays a vital role in crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Canyon City and is supporting National Night Out 2019 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Canyon City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Canyon City. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that, proclaimed by Canyon City Mayor, me, Preston Troutman, to hereby call upon all citizens of Canyon City to join Canyon City Police Department, the National Association of Time Watch, in supporting the 36th Annual National Night Out on August 6th, 2019. Would you like to go ahead and speak to that event?
We are. We've got, how many vendors total?
Twenty-six vendors total.
That'll be there. We have hamburgers and hot dogs that we'll be serving, so we're inviting the community out. It'll be a fun time had by all, so we'll be enjoying it. We have different, various games and stuff for the kids and giveaways for people that are participating.
And that's at Macon Plaza?
At Macon Plaza, yes.
With the Wiener Mobile.
Did you...
The Wiener Mobile.
Was that the thing? We had the Wiener Mobile there a long time ago, but not this time.
It won't be making presentation tomorrow.
Won't be here.
Maybe next year.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And I just, council and of course myself, are still very proud of our police department and how you rank the highest in our always, in our customer, our residents polls, that our police protection and safety is always rated the highest, and we appreciate that and we care for what you do, and we ask you all to be safe.
Thank you.
So we'll see you tomorrow evening.
Hope to see you all out there tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no Mayor Dunk Tank, and Meisner is, I think Meisner's double parked. I'm not...
But we'll have piñatas. We'll have real piñatas hanging in the trees, so if you want to take a swing at one, yes.
You can even go in a ring doorbell.
What?
A ring doorbell.
Oh.
That's one of the prizes.
Oh, really?
Wow.
Compliments at Home Depot.
Well, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What's that the prize for?
Pardon me?
Ring doorbell.
A ring doorbell.
What is that the prize? What do you gotta do to win it?
Show up and pick a ticket.
I think I can handle that.
You gotta get out there and whack the piñata a couple times for the kids.
Yes. Or the drunk goggles. I mean, we've got a lot of stuff that everybody can do, yeah.
Oh, we have drunk goggles.
Yes.
I don't know.
While you're doing the piñata.
And our officers...
Support the dunk tank.
Yes. And some of our officers will be out there as well. They'll be helping the kids.
We're gonna have them intermingle with the kids more this year, hopefully, and participate in...
Of course, they have to pick and choose what they did, you know? There are some things they get competitive at, so you have to kind of write them in a little bit, so...
That's always a fun time.
Yeah, it is.
Appreciate that. We'll see you then tomorrow night.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's fun. Okay. Tanya Wagen cellar, wagon cellar, correct?
Yes.
Would you come on up here with Valleywide Health Systems, you're Director of Clinical Operations, and this evening I have a proclamation that I would like to read. It's quite lengthy, but I will go ahead and give it a go, alright? Valleywide Health Systems Incorporated National Health Center Week, August 4th through 10th, 2019. So it's for National Health Centers Week, okay? Whereas for 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventive healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having significant impact on American healthcare system. Whereas as the country's largest primary care health, healthcare systems are the healthcare home for 28 million Americans in over 11,000 communities across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. Whereas health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving both rural and urban communities, and often providing the only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, healthcare centers serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas everyday, health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that the patients of each healthcare center are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas healthcare centers are locally owned and operated, small businesses that serve as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating $54.6 billion in economic activity in some of the county's most economically deprived communities. Whereas community health centers nationally employ more than 220,000 people, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, and certified nurse midwives who work as part of multidisciplinary clinical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Whereas the healthcare center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving healthcare outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. Whereas healthcare centers reduce overall costs of care by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which keep them out of costlier healthcare settings, like hospital emergency rooms. Whereas healthcare centers are on the front lines of emerging healthcare crisis, providing access to care for our nation's veterans, addressing the opioid epidemic, and responding to the public health threats in the wake of national disasters. Whereas National Healthcare Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's over 1,400 healthcare centers with over 11,000 service delivery sites, their dedication staff, dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first healthcare center opened their doors more than 50 years ago. Whereas during National Healthcare Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's healthcare centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by me, Mayor Troutman, to hereby proclaim August 4th through 10th, 2019, as National Healthcare Week. I recognize all Ameri, I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their healthcare center and celebrating the important partnership between America's healthcare centers and the community they serve. Would you care to comment?
Sure. Thank you. Valleywide Health Systems is honored to be a part of the Canyon City community and with our new building. Right now, we're seeing almost 3,000 patients, and we can't wait to be up to 5,000 patients shortly, with almost 8,000 visits so far in 2019. So that will continue to grow. We'll continue to be a vital part of this community, and we thank you for your ongoing support. And we are having a little lunch and tour, if you want to stop by on Wednesday at noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Yes, sir.
Seth? That number that you threw out, is that total patients or mental health only?
It's total patients.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Thank you for coming today.
Sure.
I wanted to ask a question about, that revolves around what the school district is doing inside of CCMS?
Sure.
And how that's gonna evolve and help our community a little bit more.
Sure. Valleywide Health Systems is partnering with Soul Vista Health, and together, and the school district, and together, we're opening a school-based health center. So it's going to be not quite as comprehensive as some of our bigger clinics, but it will offer primary medical, dental, and behavioral healthcare to students and their families. The great thing about this new school-based health center, it was, it will allow us to see kids during the day while they're in school, so that they don't have to leave school. So if there's barriers for them in terms of getting care outside of school, they're able to access us during the week. So we're very excited about that.
And does that come with, would a parent have to come and check them in, or? I guess those are logistics that would be worked out as...
Those are logistics that are definitely being worked out. We're hoping that, we're kind of an extension of the school nurse, so the school nurse will kind of triage any student and do the communicating with parents when they're, when it's determined that they're gonna need additional care, of which our providers will be able to provide.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Have you had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda? I would ask the acting city administrator to review the consent agenda.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, 8A is approval of minutes for the special city council meeting on April 29th and April 30th. 8B accepts the resignation of Rick Harmon from planning commission and authorizes the city clerk to advertise for interested candidates. 8C awards bid 4219 for picnic tables to Go Play Inc. 8D awards bid number 4319 for 2A, the 12th Street project to Martin Marietta. 8E awards bid 4619 to a project for Ford Road, Forge Road to Avalanche Excavating. Award, I see, 8F awards bid number 4819, fuel management software upgrade to Kubot's equipment and services. And 8G is to receive and file the list of bills.
Okay, thank you. Any additions or corrections? Ms. Gonzalez?
I have a question.
I don't see your button. Thank you.
Better. It's really for Ryan. It's not a question, but more a question.
Mr. Meisner can go ahead of me.
Go ahead. She cedes her time. What?
No, I just, I just want to say, Cindy, thank you for this format. It is so much nicer, so easier to read, so much easier to read, and I just want to say that with technology, the way it's advanced, we as council members can look back on videos and see if there's any questions that we need answered. We don't need to read at all. So this is very to the point and direct, and I appreciate it. I just want to tell you that. Thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
For the new format for the, for the new format for the cash...
For the bills?
For the bills? The previous format, we were, she, they were able to annotate items that were bid-related.
Is that your question?
Well, that's a request.
Request for future.
Okay.
It just helps out when you've got some of those larger expenses that are hoovering around that $5,000 thing that, or anything else that tells you that it's a bid.
Yeah, but if it's associated with the bid number.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Mr. Haques?
Yeah, I've got two questions. One is with regards to business, facilities, tourism, ads for 2,500. Is this something separate than what we give to the chamber to help advertise us?
It is. So the, this is Business Facilities Magazine, and it says tourism advertising. It's actually economic development advertising, so it's promoting Canyon City as an economic development place to do business.
Okay. And the second one is DD Group Parks Security. Who's, what, what security on what parks are they doing?
So they, they go and they lock up the bathrooms at the parks, and they patrol the parks. We're actually looking for next year to have the police department do that.
And this includes Red Canyon Park and all the mountain places, or just down here?
I will have to double-check. I know it's down here, but I'll have to double-check the mountain parks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Where the restrooms will be locked up. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question on the cash disbursement of the last page. There's a disbursement cash for confidential funds, and is that, is that, I know that's law enforcement related, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We're gonna, I'll ask for a second, a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for August 5th, 2019.
Second.
Second, Mr. Haques, thank you. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion on that motion?
And adopt the agenda?
Oh, adopt the agenda, yes.
Oh, and adopt it, and adopt the agenda.
Yes. And he continues with that, okay. Okay. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Haques?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, thank you. Then we invite our acting city administrator, Mr. Stevens, to make any comments.
Alright, so in your packets, there's a written administrator's report. I'm just gonna cover a couple highlights. I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Under the 2A projects, we are expecting paving on Main Street to start this week. For the CMAC project, we had that discussion several weeks ago. We have moved forward with planning for the 8th Street and Bridge Streets, paving of those dirt streets based on the feedback from that general government meeting. Just a note to the public, city council elections, the information packets are available starting tomorrow, and those close out on August 26th. And then finally, as far as urban renewal goes, we're looking to bring somebody down to do an additional presentation more, you know, about the tactics and would, because all of our current committee meetings are booked up, would like to hold a special meeting for that, so I'd need three council members to call that meeting. And we would look for available times. I don't have a date or time yet for that.
Would you like to do that now, council? Three? Could we get three to Mr. Haques, Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Cochran? We have three. Okay. And you'll set the date?
We'll set a date and let council know.
Okay.
One last thing that's not in the reports, the CML District 13 meetings are scheduled for September 5th from 4 to 8, and those are in West Cliff. So just something to keep on the calendar.
Okay, thank you. We'll get a schedule on that, and time and everything, then I assume?
We, yeah, we, when we get more information, we can send it out.
Okay. I assume that'd be an RSVP thing?
Do you actually have it now?
You have it now? Okay. I've yet to open all my mail. Okay. Great. Thank you all. Let's move on to number seven. This is a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number 15. Yes? Do you have? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Gonzalez?
Hold on. Can we have questions about the projects? Sure. Okay. I'm just a little confused on the gateway signs. It says that they are out to bid. So I'm wondering, I thought we had approved and already put those out to bid.
Those were the...
Six months ago.
Well, the mountain park signs were the ones that went out to bid and were constructed, or not the mountain parks, but the Centennial and Mountain View Park.
Okay.
And then the other bids, or the gateway signs are currently out to bid.
So they, okay, so... I thought, I thought they were up to bid when we had chosen the design. I thought...
Can I help, can I help her? Well, keep in mind that the park signs were a particular category of sign. I don't know what they were, but, and those were the same, but those categories of signs are, construction-wise, considerably different than the gateway signs. So that's what I understood, is that we would do one that were similar, and then the other ones that were similar.
I understand that. I just thought that when we sat down that day, that afternoon, about six months ago, and we had voted on what we, on the signs that we, I mean, we kind of took a poll. We did kind of a round table and did a poll, and I was under the impression that they would be, that they were already bid out, and they were just waiting for us to decide on a design.
There, there were some logistical things that we had to work out with CDOTs before we could put them out to bid. So, once we worked through those details, we put them out to bid.
Okay. So the, the design that we chose is acceptable?
Right. There was some internal things about how it was gonna be lighted and things like that that CDOT had some concerns about, that we had to redesign and make sure that it, it was gonna meet CDOT requirements. But yes, the, the design itself that you approved is what's out to bid.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Do you know, when do, is there a timeframe on when we get those bids back, or?
Actually, Adam, do you know when those are coming back?
Three years.
Wait, we didn't hear his answer.
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks?
Okay.
Okay. So is there a possibility that we'd have them before the end of the year?
That, that's the goal.
The beds or the signs?
The signs. And installed? Note that he's shaking his head in a positive fashion.
I don't think the camera reaches that far back.
We'll have, a few of us will still be here, right? Okay. Alright. Any other? Yes, ma'am?
On number 18, it talks about Regional Building Department. It said, discussed the possibilities with the county. So that's already happened?
I sat down with the county last week, Sonny Bryant, to discuss, you know, where, where it was previously and, you know, whether or not there is a possibility to move forward with that from a county standpoint. So, you know, we did discuss it. I think there's some other things that we need to look at and probably reach out to some of the other jurisdictions locally, you know, Florence, and see if there's any other appetite, because I think the thing that really bogged it down last time was whether or not it was, it was feasible to make it happen on a regional level.
And it, it's feeling a little more positive now, or?
I think if it's just us in the county, I don't know that it would make sense. I think we, we need everybody to participate, so...
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright. Now let's go on to seven again. This is second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 15, Series 2019. What? Entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section 17.16 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Vested Rights and the PUD Approval Process." Could we have comments from our administrator?
As we discussed at the last meeting, we've added in the, the language so the developer can choose which route, which path they're gonna take, and that, that has been added to this language. City attorney, do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Hoffman?
I know you have both a clean and a red line version in your packet that shows the changes. I'm happy that if there's any questions about the changes, I think between Pat and I can respond to any questions.
So is there any difference between the clean line changes and what we approved on first reading?
No, this, this reflects the changes you asked for at first reading and creates the process where if someone can get vesting, if they don't want to do the administrative process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir? Go ahead.
We're looking at the blue line?
Yes. I call it a red line, blue line, straight.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because there's burbage that's been... Well, the reason I'm asking is because there's verbiage that's been deleted.
There is. And that is based on the, it's to make the language, the changes consistent.
Thanks. So, so the deletions go with the additions as it relates to the vested rights piece?
And what's, what's, uh?
Patrick?
Patrick's comments here. Has he got any? To reassure us, we're going in the right direction?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you'll recall that at the public hearing that was held on July 15th, there was a desire to add back in the existing process in addition to the administrative, and the goal was so that, on the one hand, you could offer the development community a shortening of the process for, for how long the final version of a plat or a PUD would take by 60 to 90 days, but if the developer rather, would rather have the, the vesting rights occur as per Title 18, they had that option as well. So you've got both options being put together here, so. This is what council asked for, and the changes that were, were made were done in accordance with what council was requesting on the 15th.
I, I think Patrick is, there are the two lines. One is we could do it administratively, get the vesting, or you could say no, so you go through the classic way of going through city council and that sort of thing.
That is correct. It's an either-or proposition for the developer.
And it's what they feel comfortable with. They evaluate that, they make that decision.
They make that business decision for themselves.
That's what, as I recall, that was the discussion, not just make it one way, make it, they want to go both ways. One way, make that decision and go.
That is correct. And, and Mr. Mayor, if I could add, the what, the reason that the changes are made is only the city council can grant vested rights. So that's why the two paths have to be separate. Administrative doesn't get vested rights, but if the, the applicant wants those vested rights, it has to go through council, because by law, only the council can give vested rights.
True, correct. Do you recall that?
Well, I recall, I just want to be sure.
Yeah. Well, it looked to me like that's what we asked for.
Right.
So, Mr. Harkes?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 15, series of 219, as long as it, the attorney says it complies with our first reading, and our, at the first date, we had, we had done this.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Ms. Cochran, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? During the seating, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Thank you, thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Number eight, new creations in annexation and zoning. This is also a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 16, series 2019, entitled, an ordinance of the City of Canyon City approving and accomplishing the annexation of certain unincorporated lands, commonly known as new creations in annexation, to the City of Canyon City, Colorado. Could we have a staff report from our administrator?
Again, this is second reading. I'm not aware of any other changes that have occurred, or any other notices that have come in from surrounding property owners. We would recommend city council approves it upon second reading.
Any questions of our administrator? We're going to entertain a motion and a second.
Are they two separate?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 16, series of 2019, on second reading.
Second?
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? During the seating, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay, the second part of that is eight B. This is a second reading as well, an adoption by title only of ordinance 17, series 2019, entitled, an ordinance of the City of Canyon City zoning certain property recently annexed into the city, into Canyon City, new creations in annexation. Could we have a report from our acting administrator?
Same thing applies with the item A. Don't have any additional changes, came through second reading, and again, we would recommend approval from city council.
Any questions of council? Mr. Meisner?
Just to reiterate, the, the, the construction that's going on on the site at this point, are there any issues that are going to be coming back here later with the transition between county standards and city standards?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
The final approval will come from the city, not from the county, if we approve this. Is that correct?
That's.
That's what he said last week.
That, that is correct.
I mean, that becomes annexed to the city and is under city's jurisdiction.
Correct.
Has building department looked at that at all?
No, they're, they're finishing their permit, they'll get their CO.
They're going to get their CO from the county?
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. So they will be getting their CO from the county. Looks like they're pretty far along. Any other comments? And ask for a, a motion. A second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 17, series of 2019, upon second reading.
Second.
Dr. Mr. Harkes, thank you so much. Any discussion on that motion? During the seating, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Unanimously carried.
Okay. Mr. Meisner? Before I adjourn, would you care to say something?
Yes. I noticed that we have a open house scheduled for 3:00 in the afternoon. Consistent with my previous statements, a public open house at 3:00 doesn't make any sense to me personally. I mean, you're asking the people that want to attend that open house to take off of work.
Okay, which open house are you referring to?
September 19th. The.
ACP.
Access Control Plan for Highway 50.
Okay.
The open house is from 5 to 7. The three, the three to five is the prep, prep for staff and council.
So, Adam.
So this is a roll.
Sorry.
The prep, the discussion, come on up, Adam, come on down.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the Access Control Plan Open House is from 5 to 7. So we'll update this, we'll update this calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, so you may recall, so for, for city council meeting purposes, we were meeting ahead of time to go through the materials and prep for the open house, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I think from a public posting standpoint, the reason it says three is because city councils welcome to attend the, the meeting starting at 3:00.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else at this time? We're adjourned. Thank you.